...held on Monday, December 21st, 2015 at 7:00 PM when the City Council chambers will come to order. Would you please stand for the invocation by Mr. Justin Campbell from the Grace Christian Fellowship Church?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this night and we thank you for your grace and your love, God, and we just pray for this meeting tonight. We ask Father God that you would direct the minds and the hands and the words, God, of the council members, that they would make decisions based on the betterment of our community and as you see fit, God. We pray that your will is done, God, in this place and for our community, and we ask for your continued protection, God, in our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. We appreciate you being here. We have the roll call, please.
Councilman DeGerris.
Here.
Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilwoman Fox.
Here.
Mayor Protim Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Abshur.
Here.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On item AA, which deals with the new wave, my daughter's employed with those.
Okay.
And I feel I should not vote on that tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to citizens' input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Your name and address, please.
Good evening, City Council members. My name's Kenny Barker and 302 McKinley, Papa Bluff. I asked a question, though, a couple meetings ago about the license on the lawnmower business in town. You know, we've got, we've got all these businesses in town, they gotta have insurance, license to the city and stuff, but the lawnmower business does not. And I kinda want an answer on that.
I checked some other cities like Sykeston and Cape and some other cities in Missouri. Looks like some of them do, some of them don't. I think it was maybe Sykeston has a $25 permit for lawnmowing businesses. What I planned on doing was bringing back something to the council after the first of the year.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Mr. Christman.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Jim Christman, 464 North Main Street. And I appreciate David's taking the lead in disqualifying himself from the vote this evening. And I'd like to ask that Phillip Crocker and Jessica Fox also excuse themselves from the vote this evening. Phillip got most of his campaign money from members of the Municipal Advisory Board, Municipal Utility Advisory Board, and I feel that this could influence him in his vote this evening. Phillip, can you avoid the perception that you will have an unbiased council vote?
Absolutely. I don't have any problem with this.
Jerika, the same thing for you. You work for somebody that is on the Municipal Advisory Board and has the account there. Can you avoid the public perception that you will be unbiased in this?
Absolutely.
The public will decide.
Thank you. Any other citizens' input? If not, we will move to approval of the minutes we had in our packets, the minutes from November 2nd, November 16, and November 28, 2015, for our approval.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented in our packets. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Ms. Kirby, may we have our city clerks report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Each councilperson received a copy of the consolidated statement of funds on deposit in various banks. Those amounts are, in the Commerce Bank, $2,347,102.29. And the Peoples Community State Bank, $563,748.59. In First Midwest Bank, $12,656,343.96. In First Community Bank, $43,369.07. In Starling Bank, $64,13,344.64. And in Southern Missouri Bank, $334,502.77. Grand total of all funds in all banks is $22,378,599.18. Of this amount, total funds on deposit for the count of City Hall is $12,023,723.11. Total funds on deposit for the account of the Black River Coliseum is $43,369.07. Total funds on deposit for the account of the Park Department is $1,134,391.42. And total funds on deposit for the account of the Municipal Utilities Department is Each councilperson also received a copy of reports from city departments for the month of November 2015. Those reports are, a list of bills paid, a report from downtown Papa Bluff, Inc., a report from the municipal court, a payroll report by departments, a report from the Planning Department, a report from the Police Department, Animal Control and Code Enforcement, a report from the Street Department, and the Police and Fire Pension Report. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we accept clerk's report.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the city clerk's report. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Moving to workshop items for discussion. Item A, the City Council will review bids received for Hero Grant Project. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, this grant was actually started by our former grant writer, Renisha, and we were awarded $24,750 by the Missouri Housing Development Commission. What we were hoping to do is be able to do three houses. It looks like we were only able to do two. We accepted bids for those, and we're recommending turnkey contractors out of Elsinore for a total of $19,200 to do those two houses. The other bid was from Premier General Contracting in Cape Girardeau, and their bid was $22,173. So we're recommending the first one I mentioned.
Any comments or questions of the council?
Mark, where does the balance go?
I'm assuming it goes back to the Missouri. We will only spend, we'll only get what we spend, so the rest of that will stay. And I was told by Renisha, when she was here, the first hurdles get through this first grant. Normally, when we apply for them again, if we've done it successfully with it, they'll hopefully give us more money in the future, so.
We couldn't spend it on another project?
No, I think we had, we ended up with three houses, and the third house required a lot more extensive work that just wasn't in the money in the budget to do it, so.
What happens if it goes over the quote?
We'd probably have to rebid, or we'd have to pay out the difference ourselves.
I think we could do a roof for somebody or something.
Yeah. I think we only ended up with just a few that actually qualify. There was all kinds of different things they had to qualify for, so.
Make a motion, move this to the voting session with the low bid of attorney key.
Second.
Did I hear a second?
Jerika.
Motion has been made and seconded to move agenda item A to the voting session to be held January the 4th. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item B, the City Council will review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding an addendum agreement to the current power supply agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and Southwestern Power Administration. Mr. Bach.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This agreement will provide funding under the Trust Memorandum of Agreement, or the MOA. The Trust MOA will allow us to provide funding to the core for non-routine maintenance at the hydro power plants in Southwestern's marketing area in exchange for a credit from Southwestern Power Sales Envoys. This will not raise rates, and it will not cost the city any more money. This was discussed at an earlier advisory board and recommend approval of the addendum. If there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
Questions or comments from the council or the audience?
This just makes it easier to get the money, right?
For the core, that's correct.
Make a motion, send this to the voting session, January 4th.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to move item B to the voting session on January 4th. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Bach. Item C, the City Council will review an amendment to the policies and procedures for the code of ordinances relative to Chapter 430, planting, maintenance, and removal of trees, shrubs, and other plants.
Yes, when the Tree Board was created, they were asked to come back with some recommendations to the council. Mr. John Standard, who's chairman of the Tree Committee, is gonna address that.
Mr. Standard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm John Standard, 1310 Barron Road. I'm chairman of the Tree Advisory Board. A little over a year ago, you updated your tree ordinance that had been around for a while, and then in January, established a Tree Board. And I have several members of the Tree Board are here with me this evening. According to the ordinance, we're supposed to come up with a plan to implement the ordinance itself, just some policies and procedures. And our board has spent some time doing that, and you have those in your folder, I think. Ms. Kirby informs me that they really need to be in the form of an amendment to the ordinance itself to make, to make them permanent. So we don't have a formal amendment prepared yet, and the city attorney, I guess, would have to do that at some point. But I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I want to just reiterate, you all have my cover letter in your, in your folders. The primary goal of the Tree Board is basically just to educate the public on the value and importance of our urban trees and to facilitate training for people who want to maintain, prune, and trim and remove those trees. We, as you know, we have a grant from the Conservation Department of about $5,500 for training for tree maintenance personnel. We're gonna implement that, we hope, in February or March. We're, we're gonna contract with the Davy Company, which is probably the nation's biggest arborist group, and they do training all over the country, and they're the best from what we can find out. So we're gonna have a two-day seminar for the professional tree trimmers, and then we're gonna try to arrange a one-day, probably a half a day or maybe a full-day seminar for private homeowners. We're gonna charge a small fee for both, probably $25 for the professional folks and maybe $10 for the individuals who want to learn more about how to take care of their trees. And hopefully, that'll be coming late February or March, as soon as we can make all the arrangements. You have some information, again, that was presented to you, and the part that you see in red would be the suggested policies, just recommendations, we're an advisory board. And Ms. White, who formerly was the tree administrator, also included some references to some of the existing ordinances that cover trees that we probably haven't paid any attention to for a long time. Some of them have to do with developers, raw ground that's being developed, and some suggestions on maybe how to preserve some of the trees or take care of what's there or, or whatever. And those are just for your information, basically. I really appreciate this opportunity. Again, you've, you've heard me up here several times, but it's really the wish of our board that we can put completely behind us any of the criticisms that we've heard, or any of the comments from ill-informed citizens who really don't understand what we're all about. Again, it's primarily education, we just want to take care of our trees. After all, this town was named for one of the most magnificent trees we have in North America, the tulip poplar. And by the way, the, the biggest tulip poplars on the continent are at George Washington's home place at Mount Vernon. And I've seen them, and you can't imagine how big they are. Some of you maybe have seen those. So I really think the overwhelming majority of our folks appreciate our trees, want to take care of them, they just need to understand how to go about it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or come back later when the formal amendment to the ordinance is, is presented. But I'm open to questions if anybody has any.
You'll let us know when, when in meetings, Mark, because I'd like to attend that.
Oh, yes. We're, we're gonna publicize our training meetings. In fact, we're gonna contact all the communities, probably in a 30 or 40-mile radius, and try to encourage their tree trimmers to come and participate, because we think it's a valuable service, and there's no reason why we should just have a handful here and, and not make it available. And besides, it can produce a little bit of revenue coming back in to help, help pay the city's part of it. Any more comments or questions? Thank you again for the opportunity.
We appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Standard.
See, we need a motion on that. We need a motion on that.
So, aren't we gonna wait till there's some kind of amendment coming about?
I think we probably need to have the city attorney look at it and come up with...
I don't think there's a reason to motion anything.
Come up with amendments to the ordinance and then maybe bring it back as a workshop and then vote. That's what I would suggest.
Do we need a motion to do that?
We don't need a motion for anything, do we?
I don't think so. I'll just make sure we get the city attorney working on it.
Okay, so we don't need a motion?
I don't think so.
Okay.
All right, moving to item D, the City Council will discuss appointments to the Oak Grove TDD and to the Papa Bluff TDD and the Cripple Creek TDD. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, the, most of this has come of the attorney, the attorneys that help with the TDD. For the Oak Grove Road TD, it would be the mayor, the city manager, Mr. Otto, the city finance person or the treasurer, which would be Ms. Kirby. And then an appointee by the council, I was recommending Dennis Avery, because Dennis is more familiar with the development going on at Papa Bluff and thought he'd be a good asset to the TDD boards. The Cripple Creek would be the mayor, the city manager, Mr. Colby Robertson, David Ryman, and also the treasurer. Those were actually set up several years ago when Mr. Duckett was involved in the Cripple Creek. Then the regional TDD would be the mayor, the city manager, the county commissioner, one person appointed by the county, which they've appointed, Dr. Ken McVeigh, and appointee from the Cripple Creek TDD, which would be the treasurer. And then also Dennis Avery would serve on this board, as he does on the Oak Grove Road TDD. Rather complicated, but...
I'll make the motion then. We approve these and send it to the voting session tonight, I believe.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to move item D to the voting session to be held tonight. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Moving to the action required items, item AA, Bill Number 7868. The City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a post-reconciliation agreement with Telecommunications Management LLC and the City of Papa Bluff.
I need to leave then.
Move for first reading?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded for first reading of Bill Number 7868. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Smith? Huh?
I didn't even know he wasn't here.
Ms. Kirby.
An ordinance of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a post-reconciliation agreement between the city and Telecommunications Management LLC.
Move for second reading?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for second reading of Bill Number 7868. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a post-reconciliation agreement between the city and Telecommunications Management LLC.
Move for adoption. Second.
Madam Mayor.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of Bill Number 7868, and Mr. Christman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's my understanding that some high-priced lawyers are trying to bully us into paying New Wave $1.75 million. And I'd like to ask just what was in the contract, specifically what was guaranteed? What is the language? Can I get an answer to that?
I know it guaranteed 13,000-something houses. Thirteen, no, 15,000. 15,500 houses.
Customers, actually.
Past, past homes.
Was it customers or was it houses now? Do we know?
No, it was past homes. And that also includes homes not only in the city but out in the county, because the city cable also served houses outside the city limits.
So how many are there?
There's 13,300.
13,3?
Yes.
And this is the number of houses that are potential to be served?
Yes.
In the city and in the county?
Yes. Total number.
At the time the contract was voted on, nobody had actually seen a copy of the contract. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Eddie, you were the only two that were here at that point in time. Had you seen a copy of the contract prior to voting on that evening?
No, the attorneys advised us that everything was appropriate.
Betty, had you seen it?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Well, why were we in such a big hurry that night to get this voted on?
Well, Mr. Christman, I don't believe it was so much a big hurry. I mean, that may be the way you feel about it, but I think that's just an, you know, individual's interpretation, how they want to look at it when they present, you know, information to us and, and ask us to try to move things forward for the city. That's what we try to do.
Do you, do you see it as a mistake now that it was hurried through?
I don't know that I do.
I'm sorry?
I don't think it was hurried through. We discussed that for like four months in closed sessions, different areas of it. And like I say, on the contract, I know there is a, it was a estimate, and I don't know how they got switched to a guarantee. It may have been just a type of graphical error in your own numbers or, or interpretation. And our, we had two different attorneys that looked at it, and they didn't see it on our side, and their attorney did. And unfortunately, sometimes that happens, I hate it. But still, yet even with this company, with that taking that $1.75 million off of it, we still made more money than we would with any other company that sold it, and we still made a profit on it. And it was to the point that we were gonna have to add so much equipment at a cost that just our small city wouldn't, we'd have to raise the rates quite a bit to make up the money on the equipment that we'd have to purchase. And by going with this other company and selling it and making a profit, they've got more customers in other towns that they can spread that over, spread it out larger and keep the amount of raise down to the individual customers. We thought that was the best thing for the people that wanted to stay on the cable, to keep their rates down as low as possible, and us get rid of that, retire that bond and still make money on it.
Did you realize that the municipal utility building was going, was part of the sale that night?
Yes.
Betty, did you?
Yes, sir.
Apparently, not all the council people did at that point in time. Well, now, let's, let's get into who was responsible for coming up with this number. Where did it come from? Where did the 15,500 come from?
Utility department was asked to come up with an estimate, is my understanding, which they did. They were not told it was gonna be a guarantee, just an estimate of number of houses passed.
So was it, who, who in the utility department specifically came up with that number?
I'm just guessing, probably Mr. Presley, who was in charge of the cable company at the time.
Did the consultant collect a sales fee for the full amount of the contract?
He did collect a fee. I'm not sure how, what the fee was based on.
What was the fee based on?
I'm not sure. I wasn't involved when all that was going on, so I, I can't answer that without going back and looking and seeing.
Do you have any idea how much this, if we put it on a per-citizen basis, how much we're talking about paying or taking from each citizen of Papa Bluff?
We're not taking money from the citizens. I mean, it's, it's coming out of the sale of the cable system, so...
Well, right, but it's still indirectly or directly, it's coming from the citizens of Papa Bluff. They pay the bills ultimately.
I mean, I guess you could take the 1.75 and either divide it by the number of taxpayers or the number of people that subscribe to the cable system.
Well, let's take it by the number of people in the city, and it comes out about $100 per person, give or take a little bit. And the consultant, I'm reasonably certain was probably paid on the, the basis of the sale. Has there been any consideration to asking him for a little kick, a little bit of kickback?
Not that I'm aware of.
Should we do that?
Yes, Mr. Bach is shaking his head. He did talk to Mr. Davis, so...
Any movement there? Is he willing to?
No.
So we're just out, we're out the, that portion of, of that also. Is this proposed settlement reflected in the budget that you're going to be discussing later on this evening?
No. The way we're doing this is they're not, they're not giving the franchise tax to us. It's gonna come out of the cable funds and go back into general funds, so we've budgeted the same amount there. Not exactly sure what Mr. Bach's done as far as the electrical, you know, what they're being charged for electric rates and things like that.
Ultimately, I would like to see somebody be held accountable for it. The, the council in 2014 was accountable. Two of those people still sat on the council tonight, but at the time of the vote, that was two years ago, it had to be done right now. And I, I still want to ask why. Why did it have to be done that night? Why couldn't it be looked at a little, a little more carefully? You know, who was pushing this at the time? Why, why was that pushed to get that done? There were a lot of people that spoke out against passing it that night, including Mr. Tinsley, if I remember correctly. That person bears some responsibility, and I think the consultant also needs to kick in his share. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? We have a motion and a second on the floor for adoption of Bill Number 7868. Roll call, please.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
And Mayor Abshur.
Yes. Thank you. Bill Number 7868 has been adopted. Item BB.
Hold on a second, ma'am. Take a good day. We're gonna leave him out of everything else that's going on here.
Bill Number 7869, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving an annual budget appropriating the city's local sheriff payments in accordance with Ordinance Number 6837 and the cooperation agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, the City of Papa Bluff, and the Highway 67 Corporation Cooperative Agreement.
Move for first reading, Bill Number 7869.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for first reading of Bill Number 7869. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Ms. Kirby.
An ordinance of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, adopting an annual budget appropriating the city's local sheriff payments, sales tax for funding a portion of the construction of the Highway 67 project in accordance with Ordinance Number 6837 and the cooperative agreement between Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, the City of Papa Bluff, and the Highway 67 Corporation.
Move for second reading?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for second... Motion has been made in second for second reading of Bill Number 7869. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, adopting an annual budget appropriating the city's local share of payments, sales tax for funding a portion of the construction of the Highway 67 project, in accordance with Ordinance Number 6837 and the Cooperative Agreement between Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, the City of Papa Bluff, and the Highway 67 Corporation.
Move for adoption of 7869.
Second.
Motion has been made in second for adoption of Bill Number 7869. Roll call, please.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Abshir.
Yes. Thank you. Bill Number 7869 has been adopted. Item CC, Bill Number 7870. The City Council will take action on an ordinance adopting the budget for the City of Papa Bluff and Municipal Utilities for year 2016.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion has been made in second for first reading of Bill Number 7870. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, approving the budget for the City of Papa Bluff and Municipal Utilities for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion has been made in second for second reading of Bill Number 7870. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, approving the budget for the City of Papa Bluff and Municipal Utilities for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016.
Move for adoption of 7870. Madam Mayor.
Second.
Motion has been made in second for adoption of Bill Number 7870. Mr. Christman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to formally request an electronic copy of the budget, if that's possible. Now, I asked for it, I believe, at the last meeting, it wasn't ready, so I'm assuming that that's something that could be forwarded by email. And I'd like to make one observation here, and Phillip, I'd like your thoughts on this, as the accountant in the group. But the retirement that is paid, it's my understanding, is about 17% of what wages are. And can you think of anywhere else, any other company, anybody, anywhere, that's paying 17% into an employee's retirement fund? That is just absolutely excessive. I understand the average is closer to 5%. And I think there's a... and it's 100% paid to the city. And I think there's a way to work around this that should be considered. It's not something that you can work on tonight, but I do think it's something that can be considered in individual IRAs. That's what many companies have done, and I think this is something that could be done, and it would benefit both the employees, the city, and the citizens of the city. And thank you for consideration on this sometime in the future.
You asked my question. In 2014, they gave a really big raise for the loggers, is that correct, Mark?
Yes, they gave the loggers instead of a pay increase, and mounted to what a 6% pay increase would have cost.
It substituted a raise at that time. Now, I agree with you, it is rather lucrative package that they have. It really is. But at present time, with this budget, I'm not sure we can do anything about it today.
I'm not sure that can be done at this budget either.
But I... it is something that we should look at for 17.
Well, and I think one observation, one thing you need to remember is, I mean, let's take a backhoe operator at the street department. Makes $14 or $15 an hour. They don't leave. They stay here because of the benefits, when they could probably go out in the private industry and make $40 or $50 an hour. But they don't get the benefits out there. So, we're able to retain those employees because of our benefits. If that wasn't the case, we'd be paying these people $40 or $50 an hour to operate a backhoe versus paying them the benefits. I mean, you have to look at both ways when you're looking at personnel budgets.
I agree with you there, but I'm not sure I agree with your conclusions there. Thank you.
Roll call. Motion has been made in second for adoption of Bill Number 7870, and roll call, please.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Abshir.
Yes. Thank you. Bill Number 7870 has been adopted. Item DD, Resolution Number 1837. The City Council will take action on a resolution reappointing Dean Million as a municipal court judge.
Move for reading.
Second.
The motion has been made in second for the reading of Resolution Number 1837. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
A resolution of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, reappointing Dean Million as judge of the municipal court of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption. Second.
Motion has been made in second for adoption of Resolution Number 1837. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
And Mayor Abshir.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution Number 1837 has been adopted. Item EE, Resolution Number 1838. The City Council will take action on a resolution making appointments to the Oak Grove Transportation Development District.
Move for the reading.
Second.
Motion has been made in second for the reading of Resolution Number 1838. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
A resolution authorizing the appointment of directors to the Oak Grove Transportation Development District.
Move for adoption of Resolution 1838.
Second.
Motion has been made in second for adoption of Resolution Number 1838. Roll call, please.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
And Mayor Abshir.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution Number 1838 has been adopted. Item FF, Resolution Number 1839. The City Council will take action on a resolution making an appointment to the Cripple Creek Transportation Development District.
Make motion for reading of Resolution Number 1839.
Second.
Motion has been made in second for the reading of Resolution Number 1839. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
A resolution authorizing the appointment of directors to the Cripple Creek Transportation Development District.
Move for adoption of Resolution 1839.
Second.
Motion has been made in second for adoption of Resolution Number 1839. Roll call, please.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
And Mayor Abshir.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution Number 1839 has been adopted. Item GG, Resolution Number 1840. The City Council will take action on a resolution making an appointment to the Papa Bluff Regional TDD.
Move for the reading of 1840.
Second.
Motion has been made in second for the reading of Resolution Number 1840. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
A resolution authorizing the appointment of directors to the Papa Bluff Regional Transportation Development District.
Move for adoption. Second.
Motion has been made in second for adoption of Resolution Number 1840. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Abshir.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution Number 1840 has been adopted. Item HH, the City Council and the City of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law,
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Do you have anything else?
Make a motion to go into closed session after the city manager's report.
Motion has been made in second. Let's go into closed session after the city manager's report. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Massingham.
I really just wanted to give you a little update on the city employee health insurance. If you remember, we...